All right, it is six o'clock. It is Monday, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll call our meeting to order and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have a roll call.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coleman.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Item four is an approval of tonight's agenda. But first, Josh would like to address an issue.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the agenda on behalf of staff here. Item eleven is a resolution regarding ten fifteen East Platt that needs to be removed. But before, I think I'd like to just maybe explain what's happening in that resolution. So we're, I wouldn't say gold rush, but there's a housing tax credit application happening with the state of Iowa. And this Horizon Development Group has or had a proposal that they were interested in Macokota that would result in forty pretty nice townhomes. And they're looking for something of scale so that they can develop some, some actually nice rental and new property that might be available in town. So they've hit possibly a few different options, and that was once upon a time on the list. And this application was due April nineteenth. So in order to set the public hearings for any sort of a land scale, land sale, it needed to be put on. But since then, the ownership group met me, this, met, they made me, but they met this morning, and they determined they thought that area was maybe a little bit too dense for forty townhomes. Probably wasn't the image they were looking for as far as a build for their portfolio. So they're looking to keep good tenants and looking to make sure that they're good stewards of their money. They try to picture themselves in an area. If they do decide to invest in property, and they kindly let me know to pull this one off. So I'd like to amend the agenda, pull off item eleven.
Okay. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? A motion by Colister.
Sorry.
Seconded by Rick Earl. Go ahead and take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item five is public participation. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the council? Anybody in Zoom land? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item six, which is presentations.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight, Mike Shimkus with WHKS is with us. He's going to be presenting what the Public Works Committee is recommending for our ten year street improvement plan, and we're going to share the report with you.
Good evening.
You're welcome.
So as Josh said, I'm Mike Shimkus with WHKS. And we were asked to put together a street improvement plan for the city of Macokota. So tonight, we're presenting the report to you. I'm going to take you through it somewhat briefly. Some of the members from the Public Works Committee have been through this with me before, but please stop me at any time to ask any questions. There is a truckload of information here. There's a lot of things that I've, I'm happy to discuss in further detail. I could drone on for quite some time. So please don't hesitate to push me if you want to get this moving a little bit faster. But I find it fascinating, and I hope you do, too. So the, the quick summary is that we were asked to put together this study, try to find a data-driven method in order to analyze the condition of the streets in Macokota in the pursuit of a plan to make improvements beyond the major streets that affect the neighborhoods in the community maybe a little more directly. And so what we did is we took information that was available from the DOT, and I'll, I'll dig into that here in just a second. And we analyzed that. We had discussions with city staff, with the Public Works Committee, with other folks. And we, we've tried to put together something that's very intentional. We've got cost estimates, and we've got some data analysis that we can share with you to present something that the council and the city can then make the final recommendations for. These are the things that we, as a community, specifically want to pursue. So we've got recommendations, but this is, of course, pending your input. I'm sorry, that mic went up quite a bit. Could you not hear me well previously? Okay. So quickly through the report, Josh, if you want to go forward to the introduction. So I think what we want to talk about here briefly is this chart, one of the, this table. I'm sorry, this graph. I am an engineer, and I can tell the difference between a table and a graph eventually. But the idea is, what, what are we really looking for for the community? And at the end of the day, it does boil down in many ways to dollars and cents. We do know the, the classic adage that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So how does that relate to the maintenance and the updating of infrastructure in the community? And what this graph shows, and I do apologize for the acronym. I still have no idea where it came from and how somebody thought this was a good idea that they would then push on into the future. But a pavement management system, the idea of it is that you're trying to find the points where maintenance or minor rehabilitation is going to prevent the continued and accelerated degradation of city streets that then costs significantly more money to reconstruct in a much more significant way. So what we're looking at here that I want to give you an idea of is down here along the x-axis, we're looking at year twelve through year twenty. Now, don't ask me to break down all of the details. I want this to be, to give you an idea of where we are in terms of cost related to lifespan. And the big thing that I want to point out is that by year twelve of a new street, we start talking about needing just a little bit of maintenance. And the cost of that maintenance is really low in comparison to everything else that comes down the line. Then, in a period of five years, you've gone from, let's just say, this minor rehab is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In five years, you go to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then, as that degradation increases, that lasts three years, you almost double, subsequently double that cost. So what we're really looking for is trying to find projects in this area, in the minor rehabilitation area, so that we can increase that lifespan and present, prevent the big costs from coming down the road. We do, however, have to deal with the fact that there are streets in poor condition, things that do need reconstruction. And that's where we want to be intentional about not only investing in maintenance, but also investing in reconstructing some of the streets that really do need it and deserve it. So Josh, if you want to go forward one more page, excuse me. So to give you an idea of how the methodology that we, the approach that we took to this in order to arrive at a ten-year capital improvement plan, street improvement plan, we're looking to take into account the road condition itself, and I'll dig into that in a second. We do have bicyclist, pedestrian routes. We do want to try to incorporate some of that information and some of that knowledge. We're looking at utility data as available. As you know, we don't all know what's underground, and there's been a lot buried over the last hundred years. So we do want to try to take into account, as we can, that sort of information. We are looking at traffic patterns, and this is something that's come up a lot. And, and I'll reiterate it all the way through, but we do want to be really careful about saying these roads are the most heavily used, therefore, they need to be reconstructed. If we take that approach, there's lots of other streets that do warrant some sort of work, but they don't necessarily have the attention paid to them simply because of that one factor. So we do want to be careful about how important that is in the decision-making. And then we want to incorporate the local knowledge. Put that all together, and back up just a second. So we do put that all together. We do, you know, all the collection analysis, then we put together cost estimates, review, make recommendations, and then present that to you for your input and your final decisions. So there's several different types of pavement condition analysis tools that are used. The one that we used is PCI. So it's the Pavement Condition Index. And they drive a vehicle all over the city streets, and they do not hit every single street, which I may point out again in the future. They do a lot of it, and they do the whole state, half of the state per year. Now, I'll discuss some of the quality of the data a little here in just a minute, but the idea is that they look at smoothness, they look at types of cracking, they're scanning for, you know, offsets, deteriorated pavement. They do all sorts of, they have all sorts of numbers that they spit out, and it's literally like seventy or eighty different factors that go into this. Then they crunch all those numbers together with an algorithm that is research-based, and they come up with a Pavement Condition Index. So we do need to be careful about saying this is the number, a forty-five is different than a forty-four. Yes, it is numerically, but it, does that truly correlate to a, you know, significant difference in the condition of the roads? We are looking at more like an impressionist painting with some of these numbers. It's hard data. We know what the colors are. We can see the brush strokes, but we stand back and we see an overall image that we can then deal with and start to dive into more. So excellent, those are new streets. Good would be the sixty-one to eighty. So streets in excellent condition. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say excellent because that's the name of the category before, but they're in extremely good condition, maybe worthy of a little bit of maintenance. Then you get into fair. Those are streets that need maintenance. And then poor and very poor, those are your rehabilitation, reconstruction projects. Were there any questions on that? I can, like I said, drone on on that for a while. If nothing, do I keep going? So the existing conditions. So the DOT provided us with five data sets, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, and two thousand and twenty-one. And we want to review this data to make sure that it's good stuff. And what we found is, two thousand and seventeen, they only took nine miles worth of data, or there was only nine miles worth of data available. I don't know why. They didn't give us an explanation. We asked. And then we did find in two thousand and twenty-one that somehow the condition of Macokota's streets had raised appreciably, like very, very noticeably, in a way that doesn't necessarily make sense to what I would say is common sense or my knowledge of the community's investment in streets. And so what we did is we went on and did some spot checking, and there was no question that the discrepancies were significant enough that we just didn't feel comfortable using the data from two thousand and twenty-one. So everything we've done is based on two thousand and nineteen data. So there is the possibility that there's a street in there that's, that's been worked on, you know, something that we're not aware of in some respect, something small. But overall, we felt very comfortable doing the spot checking, driving around the community and taking a look at these things and saying, this matches the numbers that we're seeing in the data set. So everything we did is based on two thousand and nineteen data. We did collect some available underground utility information, and that was from Jeff. And we tried to overlay that onto the roads, look for water main breaks in particular. Was are there areas where we need to look at additional underground infrastructure? And then, if you want to go forward. There we go. So two thousand and nineteen street condition in miles. I can't remember the name right off, the number off the top of my head. I think it's like thirty, it's worth about thirty-three miles total. So we have street condition in miles. We've got eight and a half miles in poor condition, poor to very poor, fifteen fair, three and three-quarters good, and then six point one in excellent condition. Do you want to be careful saying the colors, orange, isn't necessarily a need for deep dire fear? It's just saying that the street's in fair condition, maintenance is warranted, let's be intentional about it. Change in street condition over time. What we do see in this particular graph is something that I do think is very true to what we expect to see in, in all communities that we work with, which is we do see this movement of streets. You see that street condition by year from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and nineteen. You see excellent streets being maintained. You get a lot of longevity out of those streets. Generally, they stay in excellent condition for a while. Then you start to see streets dropping out of the good category and then increasing in the poor category off to the right. So the fair remains reasonably constant. Next page. So we, we looked at, there's three different sorts of, types of work that we would do to rehabilitate, reconstruct, or maintain streets. And that is maintenance, rehabilitation, reconstruction. So maintenance is things like cracked ceiling, seal coating, pretty low, you know, low technical, low-level technical stuff, but very important. It's important to find the right materials, but that's something that Public Works does already. They've got a system set up to do all those things, whether it's internally or hiring it. So that's just continued maintenance, as it is. Rehabilitation, this is where we'd be milling off the top of a road and resurfacing it, but not necessarily digging deep and doing sub-based work and a lot of things that are deeper in the ground. And then reconstruction, that's where you're tearing out the whole thing. You're tearing it out, you're going down subsurface. You can get much easier access to utilities at that time, and usually those are sorts of projects where you really need to be intentional about looking at the utilities that are there and making decisions about how much you're going to invest in doing when you do a reconstruction project. So criteria for project selection, I think the quick summary is to keep this moving is, is streets, and I'll show you in the, the figures, the exhibits, that, you know, it's got a PCI of forty-five or below. So that's in poor condition and just a little bit above that, trying to capture some of that stuff that maybe is floating on the edge. Then we looked at the utilities, like are, where are there known underground utility issues? We did look at some of the trail connectivity, are there places where we'd like to connect trails? And I'll talk about this very briefly in relation to funding here in a little bit. And then we did look at trying to distribute the projects among the community, the recommended projects. So what we came up with is...
That's a small exhibit.
And there's a bigger exhibit at the end, if you really want to get into this. Now that we're talking about dollars, I think everybody's ears perk up and we start having more direct questions.
This graph is probably difficult for them to see.
Yes.
From this graphic here.
But it is large, there is a larger one at the end, if we can, we can pull out. So we are looking at about eleven, let's see, nope, it was maintenance. So rehabilitation, reconstruction, we're looking at about seven and a half miles worth of road. And actually, if you want to just go to the very last page, I think that's the...
There we go.
So right here. So what we did, we're going to do this quickly, and then I'm going to jump back to the maps, and we'll step through the maps quickly-ish. I'm sorry. We picked out these projects, and we, we've got our initial cost estimates. These are all in two thousand and twenty-three dollars, so they will increase over time, as we know. We've got these rehabilitation projects. So these are sort of the lower, lower cost, but significant work. So you're milling off the top and redoing it as opposed to just filling cracks and doing spot. It's a new street, ostensibly. And then we've got the reconstruction, and these numbers down here are sort of a lower bound and an upper bound. So the lower number is if, we really don't need to do anything with utilities underneath. And the other number, the larger number, is a loose estimate of what we think it would cost to do very much a total utility reconstruction underground based on length of street. And that should sort of bookend as we look at more specifically investigating what is the concept or the program for this particular street that the community selected. We go in and do a little more investigation and say, we have to do water lines, we're not doing sanitary, we're making those choices. But this should give us an idea, a high and a low of where we are. So it's not about spending both of these numbers, it's about spending somewhere in between. We've got seven point six miles. We've got about six and a half million in mill and fill projects, and then we'll call it three point eight to six point two of reconstruction projects. So if you want to go back maybe to the first exhibit. And I know it's tempting, but please think before you tell, just take a minute pause before you tell me that someone's street is not listed on here. I am happy to go in and add it later on, but it seems like every time I show this map, someone notices a street that's significant to someone that they love for themselves. And... So this is our scale. Red, very poor, poor, fair, good, excellent. And I'm just going to give you a minute or two to digest it, because I do think it's interesting to look at. Platt Street is not on here because it is state, so we, and it's obviously been reconstructed, so we're not particularly concerned about the condition of the pavement.
That blue line would look nice on this map, though.
It would, and I would be happy to add it. That would be my pleasure. Because you do deserve it after the amount of time and energy that it's taken. All right, why don't you head to the next one? So more specifically, these are the streets that we really considered for rehabilitation, reconstruction. These are streets with a pavement condition index rating of forty-five or less. These are the streets in the fair condition, so forty-five to sixty. These are things that maintenance is very much warranted on these. And, you know, perhaps there may be some mill and fill projects in here. Like I said, there's, there's some float in what the condition of the streets actually are, but this is what we've been talking to Public Works about. These are areas, these are locations where if you've got some money to spend on maintenance projects, it makes good sense. Let's try the next one. Here's the overlay of those two. So this is everything from fair and below. So these are the proposed street projects. And these are all the ones that are listed on the table that we showed earlier. All right? So then here are all of the streets that we really considered for the more significant work, the rehabilitation or reconstruction. And then those are the components of those, those roads, those streets that were selected as projects. Did you want to?
No.
Nothing?
No.
Okay, like I said, jump in, just let me know. This is something we put together. I, I don't think it's, it's definitive, but I do think it speaks to the, the general movements in the areas and some areas where there'd like to be some additional trails or trail facilities, connections. We do know from a grant perspective that trail connectivity is something that's very, very attractive to funding agencies and in a lot of funding programs. So being able to add these trail elements in gives a potential for funding in a way that just a simple, typical, standard street reconstruction does not, because streets are generally considered to be the responsibility of the community in which they are. And there's not a lot of funding programs available for them. This is a map of the ADT, so the average annual daily, the annual average daily traffic. And I, I do have this note down in the bottom. As I said before, we did not use the ADT numbers as the big decision-making metric. I do think it informs the decisions, and we do see the patterns, and, and we do see things that make good sense, even to me. And I don't necessarily live directly in the community, but I think there's a lot of things here that make sense to the way I see things moving. But we do have, you know, there's some little side streets where the numbers that are popping up in the DOT site are thirty years old. But they're minor streets. At what point do we need to, to really dive into that with a fine-tooth comb? So I would say that map is reference in relation to other things. If, you know, we did use it as a factor to try to decide between some things.
So if I read your map right, you're telling us that Platt Street is one of the least-used streets?
That number comes in as a zero, and I prob, I should have taken that off. That number comes in as a zero because it's not included in the data set, because that's a, a state road.
Okay.
So, and I can pull that off. I'm, that blue should have appeared on the previous map showing the street in excellent condition.
Okay.
So here we are. I think really getting down to the meat and potatoes of it. These are all the projects that are on the map. These show the limits. I will say that the limits are going to move a little bit. Some of these will include an intersection, others will not, based on the intersection condition. But there's so much going on, it's just beyond the scope of our work to, to dig down through the entire community to that level. We're recommending these projects, and then in terms of the next steps, we do want to look at any of those projects that are selected and make sure that we're defining the extents of the work that needs to be done. And if you go to the next page, right here, these are the groupings that we selected. So we selected sort of five priority groups. We called them and tried to bundle them, sort of bundle them together and then spread out costs over time. Everything else listed in the table, that TBD, to be determined, those are things that I really think that the community and the council and, and Public Works needs to speak to in terms of priorities.
I'll exit the screen here and stop sharing, and I suppose if anyone has questions or comments on this...
If you don't mind, I'm going to do, cover two other minor things. One's related to funding, and then just a quick summary of the next steps, which would still be in the report unless you need me to get off.
Did you, did you, was there another piece of that?
It's the last few pages of the written report.
I'm sorry, Mike.
It should be like page thirteen, twelve, thirteen.
That's all I got on this one.
Oh, no, it's the written report, so it's all the way back at the tail end of all the text. So funding is always a big discussion. You know, how do communities pay for this? It matters. It comes out of people's pockets, it comes out of the community. We know that. Funding, as I said before, generally for these types of projects, is not, is not available. There are mechanisms for loans, low-interest loans, grants, other things, but a lot of the grants are focused on addition, other elements. So in the funding section, I listed some of the possible programs, and you'll notice that they're related to economic development, trails, ADA, small-scale transportation projects. You know, we're talking multimobility, micro-mobility, I think is what people are calling it now. It's a new term for me. A lot of it is about, you know, clean air, environmental, environmental impact, sustainability, equity, connectivity. There, there, it's not functional infrastructure, pavement condition. So what we're looking for is how can we combine what we need with what's available? And those are the areas where trail projects, demographics, other factors can play a part in making these attractive to at least some partial funding from these sources. Next steps. So on page thirteen, yep. Where do we go, where do we go from here? We've already discussed with Public Works, and I know they're working on maintenance projects. We talked about the Public Works Committee. So there's some, any money that's available, well, there's some folks in town, I think, like it makes good sense to go out there and do some of the maintenance that we know needs to be done. We do want to finalize a list of the proposed street projects. It is a balancing act between what we see from our analysis and what the community sees from their perspective. And we're trying to find a way to merge those together. So I feel like we've got the report, we've got a list of projects, but I would say it's, it's not definitive in relation to what it means to you as a community. So if there's things in there that you decide are important, yes, we're, let's change it around, let's, let's incorporate those comments and those desires into the plan. Once we finalized a list, like really made a final list, we want to do some level, you want to do some level of investigation of the extents. Let's take a look at the utilities, let's take a look at the intersections, do we need to add trails? Is there an opportunity there? And that's when you're going to hone in on that concept level, it's going to say, here's my limits. Then we've got much better cost estimates and a much better understanding of what each project is going to require. I do think that it would warrant a trail connectivity study based on the number of funding... based on the number of funding opportunities available for connectivity, being able to connect aged populations, being able to connect, connect schools to parks, to resources, to downtown events, to all the opportunities that really make a community vibrant and active. Those are things where funding sources are available. And being able to define and plan for those routes is something that, that you want to take the first step before you apply for funding. You don't want it to look like a knee-jerk reaction of, yes, you want this for the funding, so now here we did this. You say, this is important, we understand. And usually it's a reasonably low-hanging fruit, it's pretty cost-effective to have someone come in. And there, I think, have been some studies done in the past that would be able to draw on us or others. There are also, I think, reasons to take a look at demography, because the story of connecting any communities. So if you've got community areas, neighborhoods where there is a high proportion of aged population, like if we say, here is this group, how can we connect them to the community as a whole? That has power when you go and pursue funding. That makes a big difference to the story of what you're doing. I do think, in addition, the, having a more intentional plan for collecting GIS and utility information for underground utilities, it's something that takes a while to do, but it's certainly possible. Lots of communities do it, and you start to manage that infrastructure. As you move into the future, five years, ten years down the road, it would be great to have the ability to know the age and condition of as many assets as you have in the city of Makoka. You overlay that information on top of street conditions or anything else, and patterns become very evident. And you can find places where a little bit of investment now is gonna prevent real major issues later. And you don't have to go digging up new streets to repair utilities. It's, if you wanna give someone in Public Works a heart attack, you tell them you gotta go cut out a ten-by-ten section of brand-new pavement to replace a water line. So those are items six and seven, I think a utility inspection evaluation plan, and then GIS database. So those would be our recommendations in relation to this. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Do you have anything else?
I don't, but I'm happy to answer questions in the future if they come up and as they come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, we move on, we made it to the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the March sixth, twenty twenty-three regular city council meeting. Bills payable through March sixth, twenty twenty-three, the amount of one million, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. And our February financial reports.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Home. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next, we have a public hearing, and it's a public hearing regarding state revolving loan fund, SRF loan application.
Council Mayor, thank you. Thank you for your patience with that report. This is a public hearing related to the loan application, what actually gets filed for with the SRF. Our attorneys gave us a number of different public hearings and resolutions we have to pass. We believe that these, these two on this agenda tonight are it. But this is one of the required steps for actually filing the application. And I see no one from the public here to comment on it tonight.
Okay, anybody in Zoom land?
Move to close the public hearing.
Got a motion to close by, by Lyon, Rick Earl seconded it. Go ahead and take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Okay, item nine is a, is old business, and it's a resolution adopting the ten-year street improvement plan, which was prepared by WHKS engineers.
So moved.
We got a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Lyon. Any discussion? And go ahead and take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B is a resolution authorizing sale of three-point-five-nine acres of city property by the Makoka Airport.
Thank you, Mayor. Really have done a lot of work since receiving a single offer bid on this property. The individual who did put in a bid was the one that spurred us last year to ask the FAA if there was a sale availability in this. That person is the, practically speaking, the, the person that could buy it. You can't necessarily turn a corn planter on this property due to its shape. And we have a, a position here that's described as a fifty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-dollar offer and wants to waive twenty-twenty-three crop. So the motivation behind this is that we have to build funds for the five-hundred-foot runway extension. That's largely a requirement by the FAA at this point, and trying to do so and put together some funds to do that. And so the appraisal price on this property is fifty-seven. The bidder's opinion of this is that there's not really a like-sized property to appraise and that the appraisal reflects fifty-plus acre ground. If he purchases this, it largely becomes that ground immediately and is fully valued. If you find yourself in a position of accepting this offer and moving on, you could vote yes. You could vote no, but I think that we've had some mixed opinion on this. And there's a solution that I also want to explain out a little bit and just kinda hear some feedback on. And we can kinda consider all three at this moment. When we published this in the paper, this was strictly kind of agriculture use type of land. We haven't officially heard from the county what, what use could actually happen there. So I came in this morning and immediately went over to the county office and said, can that be buildable as a residential with its lot size and shape and dimensions and what happens here? And the reason I say that was we didn't market this property as residential, didn't think we'd have to push it that far. But you know, we're looking at an offer here that's below appraisal. Airport wants to be at a full fifty-seven, they'd like something or as much as possible in return for this, as long as we end up in that position. But long story short, the county administrative offices said, yes, it's buildable, it's above two acres. It's tight for a house, but it can happen. Septic, it can fit, it's just gotta be a hundred feet away from well, it's just an oddly shaped piece of land. I don't know if it's me, maybe put some trees on either side of that triangle, and then all of a sudden it looks a little bit more square. But there's an opportunity, what I'm saying here is to say, you know what? Maybe we oughta try this again and see if we can get some residential out of it. Or maybe someone in the market wants to live that kind of small acre country dream on a ranch out there. I don't know. I did cross that with the FAA and say, hey, in addition to what we have to do here to sell public property with FAA funds tied, I know there's a time limit. They said I have until, we have until December twenty-first of twenty twenty-three this year to sell it. So they're in full support of us trying to get maximum value out of this property, and that means fifty-seven thousand or above. Third call today was to a local real estate agent, and I just had other businesses to talk about. But I said, hey, hypothetically, are there people in the community or in the greater area that would be interested in this style of a build out there? They can't say for certain, but they're fairly confident that we can make it happen within the year. So kinda gonna leave it to you at this point to kinda maybe discuss out which of your three options are best suited here. Again, just to kinda reminder, there's accepting this resolution with these terms as is, there's a flat-out no. There's kind of also the direction for us city staff to go ahead and do the steps necessary to rebid this with the intention of marking it as residential.
Okay. I tell you right away, I would never vote in favor of this. I mean, we put a minimum bid out there, we've done that on other properties, and we've never accepted something less. So if we were gonna do something, I think we would need to lower, go out again, lower the minimum if that's what we want. I mean, there's probably, there may be people out there that didn't bid because the minimum was fifty-seven. So also in that, that rent is just absurd to me that we would even consider rejecting the rent on the other portion of the property, you know, in this bid. So I don't see that, how there's any way we can, I know I won't be in support of that. I'm not opposed to putting it back out there. And I'm not opposed to it being for housing either, or for some sort of lot to build a home on. I think that this offer is, in my opinion, it's ridiculous.
I, I do have to agree with Josh. I, to me, if we were getting the full amount, and then there was a comment of, you know, let's ease up on the rent for the year, I, I'd think about it. But when, when you, when you come in several thousand dollars shy of, you know, his comment is, you, you can't price it as something comparable, I, I don't agree with that. There's a reason that we spent the money to get it appraised, and that's what it is, so.
But what do we have into it? We've got like eight.
About six thousand currently.
Well, we've got till the end of the year, we can at least see if we can try and market it.
I mean, he gets it, he's looking for a discount. And if he sells that land, it's right back. And he's not gonna give him a discount on those three acres, right? None of us would. I'd be asking full value for it. It, it only helps him to have this land. I mean, we don't have to get rid of it. It's crazy to me, so. That's my opinion on it. We all know I have one.
Can we stall this for, till the next council meeting?
You, you, you could.
Give it a little time to cook.
So if we go back to remarket it, I think the most proper action is to make a motion to decline this offer and that will go to the next agenda item from, from there. We would have to go through a new set of public hearings, invitation to bid, but then we open up that bidding for, let's just say, a hundred and twenty days, for example, and invite private parties, interested parties, real estate agents, make them aware that this is being put forth as a residential opportunity. I mean, I don't know, maybe someone will be interested in watching Plains land on the east porch of that ranch, I have no idea. But just really kind of approaching that in that way. So for tonight, if that's the direction you wish to head, someone ought to make a motion to decline this offer and we'll move past this agenda item.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to decline the offer, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Hey, if we don't have any more discussion, take the roll.
Home.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
No.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay. That motion passes. That's to decline the offer for the ground out at the, out at the airport. We made it to new business, and it's item A is a resolution setting Monday, April third, twenty twenty-three at six P M. As a public hearing date for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
Council Mayor, thank you. This is setting a public hearing only for the budget. More material will be available to all of council in preparation for the next meeting. I did put in some preliminary facts and figures in the background just to kind of at least show people what we're looking at for rate as well as understanding what total property taxes collected means for us, given our cost increases. So the Finance Personnel Committee, Andrea White, our finance clerk, and I have been, we've had several work sessions at this point, and we'll introduce the city budget at the next meeting.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Lyon, seconded by Home. We have no discussion, take the roll.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Item B is a resolution approving and authorizing form of loan and disbursement agreement by and between the city of Makoka and the Iowa Financing Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance, issuance and securing the payment of ten million, three-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-dollar sewer revenue capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-three A of the city of Makoka, Iowa, under the provision of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes, approval of the tax exemption certificate. Go ahead and explain all that.
This, this again is substantially related to everything you've been told before. I don't think I need to explain anything further other than the fact that our attorney said this needs to happen as a resolution if you wish to move forward in this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item C is a resolution approving a contract amendment in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, submitted by Origin Design for the street pla, street project Platt Street.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, we've discussed with the Public Works Committee, and we've spent some time discussing, you know, with Platt Street having no real underground work and more finishings, what the best option here is available to us. And we weighed a few things, some with the talk of an independent contractor, some with the city staff, county partnership, then also with Origin Design. All three were, you know, from the state and from Origin, pleading with us not to remove Origin from the backend of the project because there's so much infrastructure there already on this, on this job. So we looked strictly at mostly inspection services and what to do with this because it does cost quite a bit to have Origins team down this way, making sure the project's going well. And I wholly agree with the Public Works Committee that it's probably the best solution here, given some of this cost difference between city, county staff, and Origin Design, to make sure that Origin's one-hundred percent responsible for this project at the conclusion of this job. I think we all feel strongly about that at this point. Andy is on Zoom, if you have any questions for him, be happy to answer anything for you.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister. Anybody wanna second this?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Home. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item D is a resolution approving the Platt Street Project Change Order Number Thirteen in the amount of eighty-four-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and five cents, submitted by Chick-fry Excavation for the Platt Street Project.
Thank you, Mayor. The last change order resolution we had, I vaguely described there was going to be a large change order at the next one, and, and frankly, there still is one out there. But this eighty-four-thousand-dollar one could have been much larger. And the only cause for that is that there's some paperwork discrepancies between the prime contractor, well, and IDOT, and then Origin Design doesn't have what they need to produce a real change order yet. So there is things from last summer that we've discussed, not on this, but this information has been discussed with the council. I went and tested the Veach window wells as an example against this change order, and the numbers do line up. And those sorts of instances have been brought to you before. So the reconciliation of this eighty-four is what Origin has from Chick-fry that's agreeable to IDOT's needs. And so this has taken so long because there's some very intense ongoing discussion about what IDOT needs to really get things approved for Chick-fry along the way because IDOT acts as a steward in this as well before these change orders hit you. And they haven't had what they needed yet from Chick-fry. Not talking bad about Chick-fry at all, but they just haven't done everything they've need to, to provide a bigger change order to you yet. But in discussion with Chick-fry and the paperwork they do have, it was, do you wanna wait? Or do you wanna approve part of the change order now? Their preference is to go ahead and approve it in part, that's what's before you tonight. And Andy can probably dive into some deeper detail of what's on this change order. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that this is partial of what happened during last year's construction season.
Do you have anything to add, Andy?
Uh, no, Josh, you said that very well. If, if there's any questions on any of the detail of the items in this change order, I'd be happy to take them. Or if you'd want me to walk through each of the items and then what those are related to, or the work those are related to, I'd be happy to do that, too.
Does anybody have any questions?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Rick Earl. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Item E is a resolution approving construction bid to Tricon Construction. Item E is a resolution approving construction bid to Tricon Construction for the Fasada East project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We haven't taken any official action yet on Fasada East. We're now at a point where who's in is going to be in, that means they funded escrow at this point. So we are officially set, and 887,000 represents what would be if all participants were in it, we did lose two. So our action tonight is to approve the low offer in the bidding, and then this will be followed at some point in the near future with a change order reduction based off of the participants.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Home.
Yep.
And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, that resolution passes. Item F is a resolution approving 6.9% contract increase for fiscal year 23-24 with Alliance Water Resources.
Thank you, Mayor. This was the topic of our last Public Works Committee meeting. We dove into detail with Alliance manager Jake Doran and Jeff Bodenhofer, and really kind of determined 6.9% wasn't necessarily outside of what's expected in today's environment, and some of their staffing challenges that they've continued to have. This comes supported by the Public Works Committee. Jake has attached a memo in your backup council packet, but I'll defer to Jake if you have any further questions at this moment regarding the increase.
Does anybody have anything?
No, I'll just state that we did have lengthy discussion, there are some things that are that need to be resolved by Alliance, that I don't feel having staffing is one of them. You know, when you look at the overall, you know, the inflation percent, I just felt like this probably wasn't that far out of line. But they do have some shortcomings, especially with staffing that needed to be addressed, and I think that they're working to do it. So it wasn't, wasn't like Jake got a free pass in that meeting, so. Is that a motion? You're gonna make me motion it? So moved.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. If we have any more discussion, take the roll.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that resolution passes. Item G is a resolution approving partial release for community space development agreement and temporary construction easement agreement with Reddicker Partners.
Thank you, Mayor, we're actually the ones holding up the northwest corner in between the county and Reddicker Partners. Northwest corner, that's the property that sells second and Platt Street. So if you may recall, I wasn't here then, but I guess that was the old ATM drive application of the US Bank once upon a time. Significant part of that lot, while there's a pending sale between county and Reddicker Partners, and Reddicker Partners is tied to a couple different agreements that we have for redevelopment. None of those plans include that parking lot, so that is not tied to a transaction here. So city staff feels confident recommending to you to go ahead and give a partial release, so that sale can be executed between the two.
Okay. Any questions or a motion?
So moved.
We got a motion by Home. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Lyon. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Okay, that resolution passes. We're down to reports and communications, do we have anything from any of the council members? Anything from the city manager?
I do not, just want to thank you all for your patience tonight, and that's a substantial presentation that was given with a lot of math and numbers and data behind it, and a guide to decision-making for the next 10 years.
Okay. We have an executive session, so I accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we had a motion by Rick Earl, seconded by Alinger. All in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned.